Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to City Council Agenda Setting. Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Lambden.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Klitsky is absent.
Thank you. We'll turn it over to Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Council President. Only a couple of items today, nothing for September 15, but on the September 22 draft agenda, a request to brief ordinance C 36736, and we've got Eldon Brown.
Good afternoon. This ordinance was proposed by Trinity School, and they really would like to expand their campus. It's on the map here at Cedar Street between Montgomery and Carlisle. And what they're trying to do is actually leave the alley alone, leave the alley that crosses the actual roadway, keep it as a public right-of-way, and vacate the right-of-way and Cedar Street on both sides of it. And they want to expand the campus. Really, from a safety perspective, I think they're also growing, and they also have a safety issue with cars and stuff around there, and they really would like to vacate it. From a staff end, that's a tough one to support because they're taking a connective link, a paved roadway, out of the mix in there that is really pretty functional to the neighborhood. I feel that I don't know how many calls in the last two weeks with citizens just really concerned about losing that access, and also with people parking in front of their actual properties out there. And hopefully, if they did do this vacation, the south half of that proposed vacation is a parking lot. North half is a playground, is what they intend to use the roadway for. And the neighbors are all complaining that today the staff parks in the neighborhood around that site, not on it. And so they're really concerned that just any additional facilities. And I think they're trying to put a daycare right directly adjacent to Cedar on that east side, on the north side of the alley. They're proposing the daycare facility, which would expand some of their services. And so that's the biggest concern I've heard from the neighborhood is just, they just think the school's kind of outgrown its sight, and they really don't like the idea of losing that pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular access on Cedar. That's the majority of what I've heard. We have no city utilities in that alley, and there was no other utility purveyor, so there's nothing in Cedar itself that would require us to maintain easements or do anything of that nature. That's the site plan to it. And on the very south end there, you can kind of see at Montgomery, there's a roundabout there today. And that was kind of put in because of the neighborhood in there from a safety perspective to slow traffic down. And so everybody's kind of thinking it's contrary to go vacate something that we actually put a traffic calming device in there for in there. But I can, I can understand all sides of the argument to be quite truthful. But from a staff end, I think the biggest thing that we looked at was the idea of just taking that connective link out of the mix in there. It's the biggest concern we have with it. If there's an overriding public benefit to do that way, we'll have the council make that call on the rest of what they think. And if they'd vacated, I think the cost was like $115,000. That was the actual cost.
Eldon, do you know when the roundabout was put in? What, how long ago was the roundabout installed? Do you have any idea?
No, it was not all that long ago, within the, I'd say, I just don't remember if it's the last three or four years, but it's fairly recent. 2014, excuse me. Eleven years ago then.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, I'm wondering, you mentioned $115,000? Is that right?
Yeah, exact, yeah, it's $115,077.
And so does, does that just consider the, the cost of the real property, or does that also factor in the, basically, the, the impact that that has on, on a number of factors throughout that neighborhood?
Yes, just the unapproved land value of the property right adjacent to it with no improvements to it. It's the assessor's record of the unapproved land value.
So I assume we don't have a mechanism for increasing the amount of compensation based on disruption?
No, that's what we use, that state regulations kind of requires. Unless somebody wants to go through an appraisal process, somebody could actually do that. And then the city could actually, I mean, the proponent could ask for an appraisal, and the city could go through and actually do the same. And that might come up with something different than that. But in most cases, we just use the assessor's value.
Okay. And then, one more? And then, my understanding, obviously, it's not illegal for folks to park on the street, as long as they're not violating the number of hours that they're allowed to be there. And I don't think an expansion would require onsite parking, correct, under our existing codes. So this is more of a want-to-have, but not a need-to-have in terms of their expansion, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then Council, Councilmember Bingle?
You can go first.
My question was on the south side of that, the parking that is added there?
Yeah.
Is that just for intended day use at the, at the school, I guess? And that, would that become private parking, like essentially?
Yes. Yep. They show one-way access coming in there off Montgomery, and then it goes right into that angled parking. We did have a little concern with refus on the alley. They were just figuring if it was vacated, they use that alley for refus, and they were concerned that they might have some additional cars going up and down the alley that they might have to contend with. It was just a comment that I got.
Any other questions for Eldon? Councilmember Bingle?
I, I don't think I have questions so much as, as comments, because I, I hear what we're saying here, but as I'm, I'm looking through this, right, like they're wanting to build a daycare, they're wanting to expand, we're about to pass an ordinance to make daycares legal throughout all residential. It seems to be a, a priority of this council to make more space for, for daycares. And so that seems to be in line with, with our, with our stances. The neighbors are complaining about parking in the neighborhood, and they want to build private parking there to make sure that their parking isn't in the neighborhood anymore. That seems to be in line with the neighbors' conflicts there, wanting to build a playground there for children, wanting to make it a little bit safer for children. And so I, I hear the neighbors' concerns, but it, this vacation seems to be in line with every stance we've taken when it comes to, you know, density, daycares, parking, you know, safety. It seems to be in line with what we're doing. And I hear it on the traffic calming measure from 2014, you know, and there's, it's just one portion of it is, is going to be shut down. You know, the rest of it is still very usable. I guess I'm, I am surprised that, at, at our posture as a, as a body on this one right now, because I don't think there's, you know, we've, we've delayed some of the vacations, but pretty typically, this is something that we, that we do. And so I guess I'm trying to figure out from our end, what is our, what is our hesitancy here? This seems to be in line with, with, you know, who we are.
Councilmember Zepone?
Yeah, I have a question. I don't think the body has taken action or, or made any claims of staff recommendation that I think is a concern, not necessarily from the council.
Sure.
So just wanted to clarify that.
Sure.
But I, I do have a question on that staff recommendation. Just trying to understand how detrimental the interconnected part is, and I don't know if John wants to speak to that more. Because I know, like, the interconnectedness of neighborhoods and having a grid network is part of the comprehensive plan, but creating an educational facility, I, I look at a, an education campus I work at that cuts across right-of-way, that expanded to be an education facility. So I just am trying to understand how detrimental that, breaking up the network would be.
Yeah, so you can kind of see it from the map here, but this creates a super block, and that happens whenever you vacate a single street between two blocks. But this is kind of a double super block, because Adams has already been vacated. So you can see how Adams ends at the alley there. So for someone trying to get around this facility, you have to go all the way to Jefferson now. That's a concern, because super blocks are just the enemy of connectivity, of, of multimodal use. This neighborhood, we checked it, has 10% of folks that don't have access to a car. So that kind of connectivity is not theoretical. It's something that people depend on to get around to the services that are going down to Northwest Boulevard, which is, would be a common destination for this neighborhood. You go, I have to go all the way kind of off this map to Jefferson to get down there once, if this proposed vacation occurred. So I think what, what we've seen in the greater research world is that the high density of intersections is a plus for multimodal use and multimodal safety.
Councilmember Cathcart, then Councilmember Bingle.
Well, and I'm wondering, this might be more for Eldon, if you recall, but is there precedence of closing down streets that have, you know, pretty regular throughput? And then what would be the concerns going forward? I mean, are we going to potentially have applications from every daycare, every school, assuming they could afford the vacation costs, but to do something similar, and we will have set precedence here that I assume could affect decision-making down the line?
We did have a cattail though for the podium, you know, that thing connected between Wyston and Howard. And everybody felt that was an overriding public benefit to that project to do it. But that was a perfectly good paved street, and that run there.
But in the middle of a neighborhood, though? Has there, is there precedence that you can recall?
Wasn't really in the middle of a neighborhood, but that's the only one I can think of right away. I'm sure we probably had some over time. But just normally, we're not taking a paved road out of the mix of something that's a connective link, unless it's really got an overriding benefit. And that podium, everybody felt had an overriding benefit to that one.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, so on that overriding public benefit, I mean, again, I, I think that the, the council wanting to make daycare, you know, more, more accessible to the average folk, I think, is a, is a public benefit. But, and Mr. Snyder, on this, you know, the, the super block, how does that work with a facility that is directly in a neighborhood like Gonzaga University? Right? That would be a super block, right? In the same vein?
Yeah, I'd say that we have many schools that have, not just Gonzaga, but there's other ones across the city that were created super blocks years and years and years ago. Maybe over 100 years ago in some cases. And I, I guess I would say on the, on the daycare use, the, the other thing, as a staff, we are not asked to comment on the use. We're asked to comment on the, just the specific of the vacation itself. And correct me if I'm wrong, Eldon, but I don't think we can compel any future use when we do a vacation. We have to just look at the, the details of the vacation itself.
Yeah, and I would just say, you know, we were talking about over, you know, writing public benefit, and so that does feel like a commentary on the, on the vacation itself when we're looking at, you know. So I think we are and we aren't. But I would say, as a guy who, again, who represents Gonzaga, like, yeah, when you're driving down Sharp, like, you're driving for a while. But I don't think anybody's like, man, this, you know, is, is the worst thing in the world. I think that, you know, there are certain areas where it's, we're glad to have those things. You know, Gonzaga's a great public benefit. And I, I think I would probably say the same here. But I, I get what you're saying on the, on the super block and, and understand your, your perspective there.
Did you have another comment, Councilmember Zepone?
Yeah, a question on the super block, or access, I guess. It's more of an access question. If Adams is public, the alley is public, Cedar would technically not be public because that's vacated. But could someone, in theory, have access to getting through the facility?
Certainly, you'll have access in the alley that goes right between them. I mean, there's, the intent was to have a one-way drive as you come off Montgomery to go into some angled parking stalls. And then the playground was on the north side of the alley, so I think there's some intent to actually block that off a little bit so you join access just to the kids of sorts in there. But the intent was really just to keep it functional with an alley going through there for the homeowners that live along there, and then really have pretty much the access for people using the school on the parking lot, the playground.
I guess it's the, on the park, the, the Cedar section that would become a parking lot, could public still access that way to get through the road, or would they technically not be allowed? Because right now, it's a public sidewalk outside the church, too. So would that, could people still access that?
You say outside the actual vacation area?
Yeah. If you pull up the other picture.
Yeah, let's look at that one.
The site plan, yeah. So the, on the south side of it.
I think it's actually intended to be kind of gated off. I mean, you might have an access, like you go into a park or like a school of some sort for people to get into it.
But I mean, on the part that says the Catholic Church part?
Yeah, on the south side of that thing.
Yep, the south side. There's a, there's already an existing sidewalk.
Yeah. There's no intent in my mind. I wouldn't see that being totally blocked off. It's got a one-way access for the, to the parking lot. I don't see anything else at this point in time. Would actually say that somebody's trying to block access to those, to pedestrian sidewalks that you're talking about.
So I guess this is the connected part for John. Could someone walk along that sidewalk down the alley and cut through on Adams? Could that maintain access for people to get through the, that super block?
So they could, I mean, it's, it's possible to create a sidewalk that goes from all the way on Cedar and, and keep it public. They could give us an easement from, say, a public, maybe a multi-use path. I, I would say that's theoretically possible. That's not what we're, what, you know, staff was asked to comment on. And they may not want to do that in a daycare facility. It's a little bit different, maybe, than Gonzaga, where it's all adults. But we have to look at what can or can't be done, and, and that's what we ask to comment on.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, so Eldon, are they not looking, then, to vacation the sidewalk as well? Just curb-to-curb, but not the sidewalk?
They would be vacating the right-of-way, but not to say that they still couldn't maintain an easement of some sort and therefore pedestrian access.
Right.
But yeah, the vacation doesn't include the full right-of-way.
I, I guess there'd be some other potential impacts to the neighbors, too, if you're sort of creating this, where you're funneling folks through that little narrow walkway. But I, from a security perspective, I, I don't know that you would want to have, you know, strangers walking through your property if you're running a daycare, or, or a school, for that matter. But, you know, it'd be up to them at the end of the day. I just think this, this sets, for me, it's the bigger issue of the precedence. And are we going to start shutting down streets across the city for similar type, type issues, even if they're good, you know, good concerns and things that we can, we need to be addressing? Is this actually the right way to do that?
Yeah.
What was the vacation we just did for Excelsior?
That was on Grace up there, and that was a total bulb of that cul-de-sac that comes off Northwest Boulevard on that one. And that was for a apartment facility.
Right. Yeah, I just, I don't think we'd be setting a precedent. I think we have, I think we've set precedent on, on, on how we handle this.
But that one was just, like you say, it was no connectivity, really. That was just an isolated bulb of a cul-de-sac coming off Northwest Boulevard. That's the one big difference to it. He did bring up a good example about Gonzaga.
Yeah.
On there, because we have did a lot of vacations around Gonzaga.
Yeah.
Which we had an original master plan years ago to actually look at vacations as they came up. So there were some planned things as part of a master plan to do that at Gonzaga. But that is a, certainly a case that could be pointed to, where we have vacated streets over time in there around the facility for a school.
Yeah.
Any more que, Sheldon, just remind me again. So all the utilities would be fine? There's no issues around that? Cable, sewer?
Yeah, just did some closure work at each end, and they'd have to figure out what you do with that roundabout in there to get access in there. It might have to be manipulated a little bit, just because it almost encroaches on the, the edge of the vacation area going around the actual property there. But other than that, and that was one of the, I think, concerns that fire might have had to it, as I recall, is just wanted to make sure that if you got access, if you leave that there, they just assume, see the actual bulb or the roundabout come out, if they had their druthers on this thing, if you vacated the actual roadway. But beyond that, there was no utilities, no easements, nothing else going on with that street in the confines of that vacation. We have a sewer that does go down the alley that crosses, and that's going to stay public. But there was nothing else north, south, and Cedar that created any issues.
All right. Any other questions for Eldon? Thank you so much. Thank you, John. We appreciate that.
Thanks.
And from the draft agenda for September 29, we have Jacobi Byrd to talk about the town hall meeting.
Council President, councilmembers, thanks for having me. Just reminding you all that the 29th is our final town hall meeting for 2025, scheduled for West Central Community Center in District 3. Learning a lot from our previous town hall meetings. We will format this one similarly to the one we did in District 2, where we will start with an educational piece at the start of the meeting. This month, or this time, we've invited Dr. Adam Swinyard and our Parks Director Garrett Jones to present on the Public Schools and Public Parks Measure. They gave a great update to the Board of, or the Regional Council of Governments. I'm going to ask for a similar kind of educational presentation on what they're looking to achieve, and hopefully keep it relatively short so that we can have some time for community questions and answers with them at that meeting. And then we'll go right from that to our in-person questions and comments. I will also have, like we did last time, an opportunity for folks in the room to provide written questions and comments, and for folks who have, who want to use our online form to do that. So I'll kind of collate those as we're taking the oral comments and then pass those off to Council President. And we'll get some closing remarks from our District 3 councilmembers and be on our way.
Great. Thank you. And we will have tech to do all the stuff you just described, right?
We should have, and we are going to pilot, because I think Councilmember Dillon will be virtual at this meeting. So we're, we're going to try to take the full show on the road this time. So bear with me as we work out any kind of technical glitches. But we should be live on Facebook, on City Cable 5. Ideally, I will have a fully functioning WebEx component where people can tune in virtually.
Great. Thank you. All right. That concludes that. We're going to kick it over to Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmembers, the first item is, relates to consent item number 10 on tonight's agenda, contract for the Spreg Alki Broadway grind and overlay. Yet another deferral request, deferring it to September 22nd, 2025.
So moved.
Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Bingle?
Is this going to be enough time? Should we just defer it indefinitely and, and allow it to come in?
I don't have any further information. I think they communicated to the Council President that one week should be enough. Was that?
That was what I had this time, so.
All right.
Fingers crossed. It's been moved and seconded to defer till September 22nd. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any notes, abstentions that it's deferred?
Thank you, Council. Next item relates to ordinance C 36742. This is the interim zoning ordinance permitting daycare and childcare centers. And absent a rule suspension, this item will be automatically deferred if the amendment is adopted. I do want to add something. I'm not sure that the amendment that I circulated on Thursday or Friday to the council actually made it in the packet. Now, there's a discussion of this amendment, but I don't think the actual amendment is in there. It's only a one-page amendment that corrects a couple recitals and clarifies that the date you adopt the ordinance is the date of the hearing that's required under state law. So, but you all got a copy of it last week, so.
You want to refresh us on the, on the hearing date? That would be, Mr. Wright?
I'm sorry?
What, what will the hearing date be on this?
It would be next, uh...
The 22nd?
Week, if we don't defer it. And then after that, it would be October 6. Would be the next opportunity for it. So, so we'll need a rule suspension to prevent the amendment adoption from deferring it automatically.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I will, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of considering ordinance, the amendment to ordinance C 36742.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cathcart, then Councilmember Bingle?
I was just going to say, I, I am not generally supportive of this, but I do think this is a pretty modest, minor update correction, and so I'm, I'm okay with this. But if it was much more, I would not support the suspension.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, and I guess my question, is there any urgency in this, or can we let it play through?
I don't think there's a terrific urgency. If maybe Mr. McDaniel could come up and explain whether or not he's concerned about any further deferrals.
There is no specific time constraint, so if it needs to delay a week, that's fine. But of course, we always support keeping things on the legislative track pretty quick. Thanks.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second to suspend the rules, hearing that there is no urgency in this matter. All those in favor of the rule suspension, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any notes?
No.
The rules have been suspended. Now, entertain a motion to add this.
So moved.
Second. It's been a motion and a second to add this item to their agenda. Any questions? Councilmember Bingle?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm going to vote against it, just because, again, if there's no urgency, right, trying to give things time to breathe, giving them space for, for folks to be able to do it, even if it's not a, not a huge change here without any real urgency pushing it, then I think that we should just let it go through the process and let people be able to digest it before they come in. And I do understand wanting to keep it on the, on the timeline, and I can, I can understand that. But I think we should, especially if the amendment didn't make it in the packet, I think we should wait.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any notes?
No.
That passes. All right, Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Council. The next item relates to ordinance C 36732, which is, we all know is the Hart ordinance. And this is an amendment that was circulated last week, the Wilkerson-Dillon Amendment. There was also on the agenda a amendment proposed by Councilmember Cathcart. These two amendments are incompatible, so council needs to pick one or the other. So...
Councilmember Cathcart?
I would so move the Cathcart Amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the Cath, Council?
If I could just speak for real quick?
Yes, go ahead.
So folks know kind of what it does, real quickly. Essentially, what, what this does is, it, it doesn't change the name to Hart. It changes it to a different name, which is PATH, that I'd come up with, which stands for Priority Access to Treatment and Housing. And one of the big frustrations that I think everybody has been understanding and dealing with are the lack of resources to support additional mental health and drug treatment in our community. And these funds, while originally proposed for housing, have also evolved to be allowed for those purposes. And I think as we are dealing with the continual issues on our streets, with the rising fentanyl use and overdoses, and everything that comes with that, I believe that now is the time that we should be trying to solve for those issues. And I think between these funds and our opioid settlement dollars and some smart partnerships, there's a lot that we could be doing. And so what this also does is it changes the priorities, essentially to say that it, or to the uses, I should say, limiting them to specifically constructing and acquiring housing, because of course, that is a base use. But it also emphasizes that these dollars are to be, and can be used, for the maintenance operations of newly constructed evaluation and treatment centers. And I think that that is just something really important that we should be emphasizing. It also clarifies a couple other pieces that we have previously enacted elsewhere with regards to where the dollars from this fund are going to be allocated. Part of that was as a result of the landlord-tenant laws that was passed three years ago, and so making that clarity in here as well. But at the end of the day, this, to me, is, is our opportunity to really start to double down on how are we going to start to resolve the fentanyl crisis on our streets. And I think this is an opportunity. And I just, last thing I'll say on this is, you know, I spent the last four years defending the use of these dollars for housing purposes. I think there has been a lot of need and a lot of opportunity. Some of it missed, but I think now with the shifts in just priorities across the community, we have, I think, now the, the need to consider the other uses in terms of the treatment and evaluation. So I will leave it there. But that's why I put this forward and why I'm supporting it.
Any other commentary? There is a motion and a second on the Cathcart Amendment. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any notes?
No.
That passes, fails fortitude. I'll now entertain a motion for the Wilkerson-Dillon Amendment.
So moved.
Second.
And I will, there's a motion?
It looks like in the Wilkerson-Dillon Amendment, on the top of page four, some new text was not properly underlined. The verbiage that changed it from 75% to 70% should have been underlined. I'm asking that council, when they consider the amendment, they allow the clerk to correct that as a clerical error, assuming... that as a clerical error, assuming, or if the amendment is adopted, so.
Just a question, too. Would we need to do an oral amendment to change it to 70/30?
You could do that, too.
Okay, but the flexibility piece remains?
Yes.
In the language, okay.
That's a different part, a different page, so.
So Councilmember Bingle, then we'll get Mr. Wright to walk us through what we were just talking about. Go ahead.
Yeah, and while, you know, 75/25 and 70/30 might just be one number difference on both of them, I think when you're talking about millions of dollars, 5% is something much more than a clerical error here. I think that that's something that is a pretty substantive policy change, and I don't think that we should just adjust it that way.
It's the council president's decision, but my reaction is that the clerical error is the failure to underline new text. The actual text that the council would be adopting is clearly set forth, it's just not marked as new text, so that's kind of my reaction to it.
Right, Councilmember McCaffhart, and I'll comment on that.
Just for clarification, is the change, the 70/30 change spelled out in the summary on the amendment?
Yes.
Yes. So this was a clerical underlining error that we're discussing right now, which does not change the substances of the amendment.
So if a council member was so inclined, there could be another motion for an oral amendment to fix that underlining, and then you could take up the main motion on the amendment, so, if you wanted to do it that way, too.
Okay, well, just to be clear, I'll entertain a motion to fix the underlining of the 70/30 in the amendment.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember, you have a comment before we take the vote?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to vote against this just because, again, you know, I don't, I don't think there's any rush on time on this. I think that we could give it the space to breathe, and while it's just in underlining, people who are coming in, you know, and are regular participants, understand what a strike-through is, what an underline is, what neither of those are, and so again, I think it's a disservice to the public, even though it's a week from now that we're going to be considering this, I still think it's a disservice to not give it the space to breathe with the actual final good draft out there for people to be able to digest as well as possible, so that's no commentary on the ordinance itself, it's just on allowing the public to have as much time as possible to understand what's being decided.
Councilmembers, opposed?
Yeah, I'll be supporting this. I think making that change right now does allow there to be a clean version before it's public, before there's a first hearing next week, so this would allow a clean version to come, be done before, a clean version be updated before it's heard.
Councilman McCaffhart?
One more clarification. If this passes, will it be on the agenda next week?
Yes.
So the final reading is what gets delayed, not first reading?
It would be automatically deferred.
Right.
If you adopt the main amendment, yes.
Yeah.
So.
But that means it would be on, the first reading would be?
From, I think, first reading October 6th and then final reading October 22nd.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So there is a motion and a second for the amendment, for the underlining of the verbiage of 70/30. Councilmember Bingle, one more comment?
I actually will change my position on this now that I realize that it will be an automatic deferral of one week. It gives to October 6th. I think that's plenty of time for the public to deal with that.
Can I get a motion to withdraw the motion? Or can we move forward?
I think you just need a vote on the oral amendment.
All those in favor of the oral amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any notes? Abstentions, that is approved. Thank you.
Now you can vote on the main amendment.
Now we can vote on the main amendment. Eric, we had a motion and a second?
Yeah, I'll just speak on it, too, really quickly. I do appreciate Councilmember Cathcart's, you know, amendment and some of the kind of back and forth around, you know, 60/40, 80/20, 75/25. It does feel like 70/30 is a good compromise, but one thing that is different about this is there is language for flexibility, so you certainly could still hit those targets of 80/20. In past years, it's been 90% for capital costs, so again, I think with this amendment, it does allow that flexibility, and that flexibility is being decided by council on an annual basis when we decide to spend these funds.
I echo those comments, and I echo Councilmember McCaffhart. Since we're the last two people standing to vote this money in, I really have been supportive of this and this funding and where it goes for the investment in capital, also for the investment of services to make sure that the people we're trying to help have the support that they need going forward. I, too, was open to flexibility. That was critical because things are changing very rapidly, so what we vote on right now, I don't know what that will look like in three years. It may be something totally different, but council has the ability to set that forth every year in their resolution going forward, so I think that's the opportunity that we have. Councilmember McCaffhart?
Yeah, just a question. Do we, do we know for a fact, though, that what's in our resolution that's non-binding will be adhered to? Because, I mean, we've had code provisions that lay out priorities that have not been adhered to, and so will this actually be followed?
Councilmember McCaffhart, that's a really good question. It is the intent of this council being followed because we get to vote on the budget part. I think that's our lever that we have the control. There is a motion and a second to adopt the Wilkerson-Dillon Amendment. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any notes?
No.
Abstentions? That passes. Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Council, for your patience on that one. The next item relates to ordinance C-36733, the Affordable Housing Permit Fee Deferral Program, and you do have a Wilkerson Amendment Number Two on that, on your agenda for possible consideration. There is also a amendment proposed by Councilmember Cathcart, which would not be compatible with this, so again, as in the prior discussion, council needs to consider which amendment would like to adopt.
Okay. Councilman McCaffhart?
Yeah, I will so move the Cathcart Amendment on ordinance C-36733.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember McCaffhart?
Yeah, if I could just speak to it real quick. So very simply, what this does is it tweaks the proposal. It adds the words attainable along with affordable, and it also defines what attainable housing is. It also identifies specifically low-intensity, single-family, or missing middle, duplex, triplex, fourplex, cottage housing, townhouses, projects of six or fewer units would qualify if at least 60% of the unit rent at or below the 120% AMI affordability level for the first two years, and then it also, well, that's, I mean, that's basically the summary. And so the intent behind this is let's not just do these deferrals for quote-unquote affordable, let's also do them for workforce housing, where we desperately need more workforce housing, and I think this is a great opportunity to broaden this a bit, to show that this can work. I sat on the 2016 Infill Development Steering Committee or Task Force, and that was one of the very specific recommendations, was the deferral of permit fees until the point of CO, and that was for broad-based, everybody. Now, I understand there's a lot of fears and concerns over how that would, that would work in reality, but I think we have an opportunity here to show that it really can work and can be very beneficial, and so that's the goal. The goal is simply not to change what's there, but to simply add to it and allow for missing or workforce housing to be considered along with affordable housing.
There is a motion and a second for the Cathcart Amendment, realizing it's not compatible with the Wilkerson-Dillon Amendment as previously voted in. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any notes?
No.
No's have it? Thank you.
No, I'm a no.
You're a no. Thank you. 42. Entertain a motion for the Cathcart-Dillon Amendment?
Actually, Wilkinson Amendment Number Two.
Dillon, Wilkinson, thank you.
Just Wilkinson.
Just Wilkinson, just, what day is this? Yes, just Wilkinson. It's Monday. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Notes?
No.
The ayes have it?
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
No changes contemplated for the 29th. That's your town hall meeting, so we just need a final motion to approve the agendas as modified.
Entertain a motion to approve agendas as modified?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any notes? Abstentions, agendas are approved. We are in recess until 6:00 PM. Thank you.